Now, when you end, it's important to keep. That you will end your meeting. Okay, now you're live.
Uh huh.
You remember about twenty second delay. And.
Not thoroughly care.
And when you're done. And now you're live. That's what you're gonna do when you guys are done.
Okay, end meeting.
End the meeting and it's gonna stop your recording. It's gonna stop your YouTube.
So that's all I have to do is be on the end meeting, right there. And that's all I have to do. And then I'll click that off. Okay, end meeting. Alright. So that's all we have to do is be on the end meeting, right there. And that's all I have to do. And then I'll click that off. Is that gonna drop me crazy?
Uh, no.
Okay. Okay. Alright, um. Oh, here's Nick. Alright, so I guess our meeting, we're missing is Mike Jones and Shane. So, um, I'll go ahead, I'll come up and I'll take it with me when I like.
I've got my phone, so you just call me if anything.
Okay.
And then, the door's gonna lock, so once you go out, make sure you've had everything, or just call me after.
Okay.
Well, you have a key, right?
No, I'm gonna have Jim come up here and look in. No, I'll call ya, but I'll just turn the lights out and leave. Okay, thank you. Alright, um, hi guys, I know it's weird, um, doing this, but, um, and I haven't, I've been a part of a meeting before, but I've never been like, you know, having to click all these buttons and stuff. So now I get to see what Trey does when he's in a meeting and I'm not, I'm not Trey, as you can see by the thing that I wanted, uh, cuz I didn't know how to do it, so Trey let me come to his office to, um, to do this, so. Anyway, so we're, we've got a quorum. Oh, I thought Nick was already here. Hey Nick, are you here? No, it's like, let's get Nick in.
Hey Karen, can you hear me?
I can, how are you?
Yeah, kicked me off, I'm sorry.
That's alright, that's okay. And I'm wearing a mask today because I'm in Trey's office and I don't wanna infect, you know, his office, so that's why I'm, that's why I'm wearing a mask today.
Well, you ain't gotta tell me nothing, it's all good.
Okay, so, um, I'm gonna go ahead, it's, um, we have a quorum, and, um, so I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, call the meeting to order, and, um, it's six thirty-three. And, um, we've got Bill and me. So really, all we're missing is Shane and Mike Jones. So, um, the first thing on our agenda was to review the March minutes. So, we, um, don't have the minutes for March yet, so we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to, I guess we table it, or do we have, I mean, that's all I can think to do. Um, and we don't have to have, since we don't have the minutes, we don't have to have a motion, I don't think, to, you know, table the minutes, is that right, somebody with parliamentary procedure?
I think you can just do it next week. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, I can hear ya. So we can just do it next meeting. Okay, alright, so we're gonna, we're gonna table the, uh, reading of the, and approving the March minutes for next month, for May. Um, okay, so the only thing that we have on our, um, agenda tonight are some changes to the, um, the old tobacco stores located at five oh four North Center Street. Um, they've got three changes on here that I'm showing, um, wait a sec. Did everybody, did everybody get these, um, documents from Regina last week? Or I think it was a week ago Friday. Jim?
Yes.
Jimmy Von Tonglen, look at your beard. Have you, is this, uh, no show, no shave April?
I'm not gonna shave till this is all over.
I, Brenda can't wait to, uh, for this to be over with, are you driving?
She loves it.
All the scruffy.
Yeah, she loves it.
Oh, she does. That's funny, I noticed, I noticed you sporting the, you know, the, the whole whatever look you call that. So, did everyone get a copy of the, um, of all this stuff that Regina sent, the, um, what they're wanting to change? Uh, I talked to Trey for a few minutes about this this afternoon, and, um, I wanna get y'all's opinion on this. So, the size of the AC unit, is that have anything to do with us? I mean, wouldn't that be building code and not zoning?
I would think so.
Mr. Bailey, what do you think? I mean, what, I don't, I haven't found anything in our code about AC units, does that have anything to do with us? Okay, so, um, so the increase in the HVAC doesn't affect their, um, permit at all. Um, and then, because we don't have a whole lot to do with interior, the interior of the building, and it also states that they're, uh, they're moving the counter inside the store. So, I wouldn't think that that would affect us either.
I wouldn't think so either.
No.
No.
Okay. Um, and then, the gas pumps, so they're removing the gas pumps in the canopy over the gas pumps, and, um, they revised the parking lot landscaping. So, um, I'm sure everybody's jumping up and down, they're gonna remove that canopy and those old gas pumps. It doesn't say that they're, I mean, they say that they're moving, they're removing the gas pumps, but they didn't say anything about the tanks. I don't know, I'm sure that's been addressed with, um, the EPA, and those tanks. Excuse me?
A D E Q, so who has to sign off on that?
Okay, A D E Q, but they don't say that they're removing the tanks, and I'm sure that the gas pumps, they're doing what they need to do, I don't see where that really affects us. And I think really the only thing is the parking lot and the landscaping. Um, they have moved around, um, some of the driveways, they have, um, let's see. There used to be two driveways in the front, two entrances, and now there's gonna be only one entrance. And, um, hang on, cuz I'm reading. And I don't know if y'all can see this. I don't, I'm not good, I should've gone into my email, I don't know how Trey does that, he has a way of of doing that, but if y'all could, y'all can't see that, and I can't see if I do that. Anyway, y'all have, I don't know if y'all saw where there were, on the south side of the building, there were two entrances into the building, into the parking lot. They are removing one, and they're leaving one the same. Um, and then, um, it shows where they have the new sidewalk, where they're putting in, um, a new five-foot concrete sidewalk will be, um, lining the property on the, um, on the south side and on the east side. So, um, have y'all, have y'all looked at this, did y'all look at that page?
Yes.
Okay, so what do you, I mean, are we, are we good with that?
It, I mean, to me, it looks like they're abiding by all the overlay district rules with all the plants and shrubbery in the sidewalk, so I mean, I think all that stuff looks good.
They're not putting in shrubbery. We're just putting in, they're just putting in a sidewalk, I don't see anything on here about.
On the, it says landscape drainage plan, it's got, it's got a new willow and new shrubs on there.
Hang on. Oh, landscape drainage plan.
Yeah, it's got, it's, it looks like they're doing two, a little tree on each adjacent corner, and then there, there looks like a bunch of little shrubs.
I see, new shrubs and new willow oak.
And they got a five-foot sidewalk.
I totally missed that, okay, and then a new willow oak over here on one side of the, on the north side of the driveway, and then, oh, so these little circle things are shrubs. So they're gonna have shrubs all the way around. So is all of that green space from, from, um, where the sidewalk is up to the shrubs, is all of that green space, Kelly?
Uh, I think so, cuz they're in the overlay, so I think they've gotta, I mean, I don't know that they've gotta have, have that many on there, but they, they've gotta have so many, over so many feet, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah. Okay, alright. Okay, so that looks, that looks good, I'm just trying to figure out where there's room, they have room to put that green space in there? I g- I guess I overlooked this page and didn't think about, um, them actually having room to put in green space.
Maybe they're gonna tear up part of the parking lot.
Well, they, and I was gonna drive by there on the way home and I forgot to do that. Um, hang on a second, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull up a satellite view of the property. Cuz I'm just trying to wrap my head around what it looks like now. See if I was fancy like Trey, I could bring a thought on the screen so everybody could see it, but I'm not.
Karen, there's a share my screen button somewhere there, I can't remember exactly, I'm not on my computer, but let's hit share my screen.
Oh, I see. I wonder if I could just minimize. Looking for an application, uh, well, I, yeah, I, I don't think I can do that, that looks complicated, anyway, um, okay, so in looking at this, they have, well, they are gonna cut up some of the, there is a little area of green space there already. And I guess they're gonna, um, increase that, and, um, increase that and have more, more green space there. I didn't realize there was, um, already, already green space there, but they're just going to buy,
they get the shit straight.
Um, they're just gonna have one driveway, and that's gonna be on the north side of the parking lot, and then on the northeast part of the parking lot, and then they'll have green space and a sidewalk from there all the way around the corner, just like the drawing shows, and then they'll have another curb cut here on the east side, sorry, on the south side, and, um, where it is now that you go through the drive-through like that. So, um, okay, so they do have, there is room to put, um, green space on here, okay, my bad.
Does it show how wide the green space will be?
Not on this drawing, no. Um, Kelly, did you catch that, can you tell?
No, I don't, I don't see that it's got a size on there, but I was gonna say that, I mean, I'm, I'm good with, with all the changes that they've got on number three. Uh, I mean, my only question is,
They own the mine system up there.
Are the, are the tanks, are the tanks being removed, or are they already decommissioned, or, that's, that's really my only question.
If I try to mute down here, well, I'm speaking, and it's not, being recognized with this. No, this is fine, it's just the way they, they didn't open it up on, up there. Saying like, he talks, it turns green, if Bill talks.
Yeah.
Hi, hi Jim?
Yeah, you, you're not, you're not on mute.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm not?
Nope.
No, we can hear everything you're saying.
Well, my screen's not coming up green when I gotta talk.
Yeah, there's a microphone.
No, okay, alright, good.
Did y'all catch what I said?
Yeah, about the tanks, um.
Yeah, that, that's my only question, I mean, I, like I said, I, I mean, I don't really think it's up to us about the, the, the bigger size of the air conditioning unit and really anything on, as far as the counter on the interior, I mean, I think that's more of a city code thing personally, and, and I'm good with number three, if they're gonna remove all that stuff, I think it's just an eyesore as it is, but I mean, you can't just cut, I mean, and the tanks may have been cut off back years and years ago, I don't, I don't know, but, um.
Well, the only, the only thing is they're removing the tanks. They're gonna have to do an environmental study on the ground.
Well, yeah, they're gonna have to do a phase one and maybe a phase two, but that's what I'm saying, we, we probably need to get some kind of info from the A D E Q if those things have been properly decommissioned, cuz you have to pour sand and fill them up or do something to them, I'm not just, I'm not exactly sure what all has to be done, but you can't just, you can't just cut them off because they could be leaking out, uh, gas out into the soil, and it could cause some problems for everybody later on.
The last time we talked to them, they, they were dealing with, uh, AEDQ, and evidently it worked out an arrangement, the architect, I think, has been in the hospital, uh, so I heard. But they had, they had supposedly cleared to, uh, AEDC, uh, not the, uh, environmental control, yeah, AEDQ, yeah.
Yeah, it, I mean, and they may already have that letter, I just, I mean, I haven't, I haven't seen or heard anything about that, but I think there's some kind of letter that you get from A D E Q basically signing off on it saying it's all good to go.
Well, the one, the, the staff member that was dealing with them, as you probably know, left the city, so, uh, that letter may be there, but they, the word we got was they had, had, I think, three options, and of course, one of them was to, uh, fill the units with sand, or completely remove them, or decommission them in concrete over them.
Okay, alright, I mean, it's, I'm good with, I'm good with everything, man, as long as all that stuff's been done.
Okay, yeah, because, um, I'm just, I'm thinking here. Okay, so it says here, I'm looking at the code, and it says that, um, a minimum of twenty-five feet of landscaped green space exclusive, exclusive of right-of-way shall be provided along the road right-of-way of Center Street in any public street to which the development has frontage. So is that linear, they're talking about linear feet, twenty-five? They're not talking, is that right, Mr. Von Tonglen, is that twenty-five linear feet?
It'd be a twenty-five foot width, I, I don't think they're basically possible with that site without tearing the building part of the building down.
Exactly.
You're dealing with the existing build.
Yeah, cuz there's no way to have twenty-five feet wide.
Could, in my opinion, but, uh, there's some part, tear out part of the building.
So we're good?
Twenty-five feet, yeah, that'd be it from the structure of the building.
Okay. So we're good with the, whatever the width is of the green space, we're good with that? I mean, it's wider than five feet, because it states in here that the sidewalk is five feet. And, um, this is all green space in here, then it's wider than, it's definitely wider than five feet. I'm just, I'm reading this. Cuz I was just a little, honestly, I was a little confused by all this, because it threw me, you know, that they had the seven tons, you know, they had HVAC in there, and then the counter, and then, you know, I mean, that has nothing to do with us, so I was just a little confused over the whole, this whole packet, um, and I looked at it several times, and I did not see that page. I must not have printed it out, so, um, you know, missed, I missed that one, um, so we can entertain, I guess, a motion to accept the, um, changes to the gas pumps, canopy removed, and the parking lot landscaping revised.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Who seconded that?
Nick.
Nick, okay. Okay, uh, I guess we'll do head count, since it's hard to tell who says a and a, Jim Bailey?
Um.
Bill Cooley?
Aye.
Kelly? Well, yeah, Nick? Me, I, okay. Okay, so the motion passed. Do we need to put any, anything in there as, I mean, because they've, they have gone through, because the original, um, plans that they had, um, did have the, um, quality Arkansas A D E.
Yeah, I, I say we go ahead and, and approve one and two, and then that way, if, if we're supposed to and we don't, then we don't have to reconvene and do this all over again.
Okay, so Kelly made a motion to approve HVAC and the counter in the store.
Correct.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Okay. Um, Jim Bailey?
Yes.
Bill, of course, Kelly?
Aye.
Okay, Nick?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, um, so that's all that we have on the agenda. Is there any other business that we need to discuss while we're all here? No?
No.
Okay, so um our next meeting will be in May. And it's the third Monday, will be May the 18th is our next meeting. And let me ask everyone a question. Is everybody good with 6:30? We need to, I mean, that's what time we've always had it. Six o'clock, I know, I mean, a lot of y'all work out of town. It's hard for me to get anywhere by six o'clock. Are y'all good with 6:30? Do we need to move it to six o'clock? I mean, what do y'all think?
I'm good with 6:30 if everybody else is.
Yeah, it's good for me.
Okay.
I'm good at 6:30.
Okay, so May 18th at 6:30, and uh, we will pray that we get to all be together here.
In person.
In person, yes. And I'll have to wear a face mask and um and, and, and Mr. Von Tonglen will have shaved.
I don't know, it depends on my modeling contract.
Giving you a hard time about your whiskers today. I like it though. I like that, that, that rough scruffy look.
Scruffy planner look, yeah.
Yeah, so um, if we don't have anything else, I guess we are adjourned. Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you.
Uh, y'all be
Thank you.
Uh-huh, thank you.
I'll take care.
Uh, bye.
See y'all later.
Bye, thanks a lot.